All right, everybody, I got seven o'clock. Thank you for being here. Let's call this October 24th regular city council meeting for the city of Troutdale open. And then let's go ahead and rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's have roll call, Sarah. I'm expecting Counselor White. Just so you know.
Okay. Counselor Ripman?
Here.
Counselor Caswell?
Here.
Counselor One?
Present.
Counselor White? Counselor Wittrin?
Present.
Counselor Glance?
Excuse.
And Mayor Lowery?
Here.
Do we have any agenda updates? Ray?
No, Mayor, the agenda is as presented.
All right. Let's move on to agenda item number two, public comment. Public comment on non-agenda and consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of the council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comments. Citizen comments is open. If anybody on Zoom wishes to make public comment, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, not seeing anybody on Zoom. Anybody in council chambers tonight wishes to make public comment? Go ahead and approach the desk. Name and city of residence for the record.
Adrian Kestner, Troutdale. I was unfortunately unable to stay through the entirety of the previous council meeting. Otherwise, I would have made my comments there, because life happens. But regarding the discussion on the dog ordinance, I wanted to kind of get a couple thoughts on the record. One is, I think it is important for the community and for council to get this not matter resolved sooner rather than later. And with, I think a couple months is probably too long, simply because the status quo, as has been pointed out by a number of staff and law enforcement people, is fundamentally unenforceable. Whatever people would like to have seen and like to have had the situation develop, in many cases, that ship has sailed. So I think it is important for this to be revised, resolved. Dogs exist. People want to walk their dogs. Paths should be available, whether they're a park path or a sidewalk in the city, with the same rules no matter what. In my personal opinion, but it really needs to be settled because the status quo is just going to be ignored. So anyway, that's my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kestner. Appreciate it. Anybody else? All right. Public comment? Nope? All right. I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. Let's move on to agenda item number three, consent agenda 3.1 minute, September 26, 2023, regular meeting. Have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I move adoption.
Seconded by anybody?
Seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor One. All in favor of approving consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. All right, passes. Thank you very much. Let's move on to agenda item number four, a report from AMR regarding lifeguards in Glen Otto Park, Rob McDonald and Sean Rossin with American Medical Response. The floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council. We really appreciate the invitation and the opportunity to discuss what we've done and what we've done in history here and the amount of pride we have and the amount of respect we have for the city council and the city and the surrounding areas for allowing us to do this good work. With that, I'd like to introduce Sean Rossin, who heads up our river rescue program. He's going to provide you guys a quick report on how we've been doing.
Awesome.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks again for inviting us. My name's Sean. I'm the coordinator for the River Rescue Program, which AMR operates. I know it's a dark, wet, cold October evening, but I'd like everyone to put your mindset a little bit in a hot July afternoon. Pretend it's 95 degrees out there. We've got kids and families going down to the beach. And with that mindset, we can kind of see why this presentation is relevant. I loved when I came into this room, the maps you all have up on the wall. And I just wanted to signify here, for anybody that's not familiar, Glen Otto Park is within your city limits and it's right along the Sandy River, just upstream of Highway 84. It's essentially this section of river right here. And this is the area that we patrol during the summertime. So the AMR River Rescue Program, you can see our team here along with some of our partner agencies in our preseason training.
It sounded weird, didn't it?
Sure did. Got a little fast.
Maybe I need to. We were trying a new thing today, but it's just not wanting to do it. Let me kick out of here real quick. Can I do that one?
Yeah.
Sure, thank you. It's okay.
You thought you were five minutes early. Counselor White has joined us tonight. So we just started with agenda item number four. Rob McDonald and Sean Rossin from AMR are about to give their presentation.
Okay, so just to give you all a bit of a program overview, our team this summer was made up of 23 EMTs and paramedics who are trained in swift water rescue and open water lifeguarding. This is different than a regular lifeguard in a pool. You have to be trained in how to rescue someone in a river. And we're certified through the United States Life Saving Association, which is a national organization that certifies lifeguarding programs all around the country. The majority of them are beach lifeguards in places like San Diego, Santa Cruz, California, Florida, Hawaii, New Jersey. Our program is pretty unique. We're one of the very few that works on a river. And so thanks to many of you all that have been involved with this for many years and AMR, it started this program many years ago. We've got this unique program where we have trained medical professionals working as lifeguards in a river-moving water environment. We've been active at Glen Otto Park since 1999, when the city and the Booster Club approached AMR and asked for some assistance to solve a problem of regular frequent drownings in the park. And we expanded a high rocks park in 2002. Our training involves a two-week training academy that we do in May. And then we're in service at both Glen Otto Parks here and High Rocks Parks over on the Clackamas River. And we're out there every day from Memorial Day weekend until Labor Day. Our operation hours here in Troutdale are from 10:00 in the morning to 8:00 in the evening. And every day, we have at least two EMT lifeguards up in service, sometimes up to four, depending on the weather. If there's a big heat wave or a holiday weekend, we'll increase our staffing if we know there's going to be a lot of public there. To give you some idea of the historical data, since the program has been in place, the total census of the number of public we've attended has been well over a million people. We've had over 2,000 assists and over 112 rescues. I'll differentiate between those. An assist is essentially when someone is in trouble in the water and needs help, but they're able to grab a rope or grab a paddleboard or help get out of the situation. A rescue is a much more serious situation where someone is actively drowning, they've already submerged, or they have a medical emergency in the water. So those are some numbers throughout the life of the program. And then from this past summer, you can see some of our numbers. We had, at Glen Otto Park in particular, 50 assists, two rescues. And one of our most important programs is our PFD, our life jacket loner program, where we loaned out over 1,500 this summer. That is probably the number one prevention step we can take to make sure people are safe in the water and go home safe at the end of the day. We have over 600, almost 700 other preventative actions and 982 info talks with the public, where we frequently have people come down to the park and ask about the local flora and fauna, the tourist opportunities around Troutdale or the Columbia Gorge. And we help point them in directions of places they can visit or tell them about Glen Otto Park.
What's an example of a preventative action?
Next slide, please. We'll talk about that. So the preventative actions are when we see someone in the water that we identify as having difficulty, having trouble swimming, and we think they need to be in a life jacket. We'll approach them, we'll make contact with them. Or if it's a child, we'll talk to their parents and explain, this is a dangerous section of the river. The conditions are very risky here. We think your child should be in a life jacket. And we loan them out for free. So come on up to the lifeguard shack and we'll loan you a loner PFD. Other preventative actions we take are giving people recommendations about where in the park it's safer to swim. We give warnings for at-risk behavior. If someone looks like they're about to jump off the bridge, we cut that off before it happens. And a lot of people, many of you probably know, like to float through, down the Sandy River in the summertime. They'll often put in at Davney State Park and take out at Lewis and Clark State Park. Right at Glen Otto, there's a bit of a water hazard and they'll often flip their tubes and panic. And so we'll help guide people around that hazard or go in and help them if they are getting into trouble. Those are some of the preventative actions. We also respond when there is an emergency. We're going into the water when there's a swimmer in distress. We're activating a 911 water rescue response when that's needed, if we need more resources on scene. And we'll also respond to on-land medical emergencies. If any of you have been down there on a busy summer weekend, you probably know that the Sugar Pine Restaurant is a really popular spot now. That parking lot fills up. There's hundreds of people coming through all day. So we can have emergencies both in the water or on shore as people are enjoying the park. And we also will respond with some of our allied agencies, like Gresham Fire Department, Waukami County Sheriff's Department, on out-of-park incidents if they need our assistance for a water rescue. I'd like to share a little bit of a rescue incident that happened this past summer. And this is taken from an incident report following the rescue. So River Rescue Tech 282 made contact with the subject, River Ripe of Pilot Rock, where the subject became entrapped by a root wad strainer and his entire body submerged underwater. River Rescue Tech 282 surface dived and contacted the subject underwater and pulled the subject above water to maintain his airway. 282 maintained contact with the subject as the subject's lower body remained entrapped on the root wad strainer. River Rescue Tech 281 met 282 and the subject at the submerged root wad strainer and assisted in extricating the subject. So this is a description of a pretty high-risk type of situation where we're going in, where that person very likely would have drowned if we weren't on it immediately. Some of the other activities that we're involved in are public education. This past year, we were able to meet with students at Sweetbrier Elementary School and at the Fairview Sunday Market to talk about water safety during the summer. We also remove hazards in the river. If there's a stuck boat or a log that's in the way that's going to cause people to be in danger, we'll try and mitigate those risks. And we do a lot of media interviews to discuss water safety around rivers because it's a topic that a lot of people aren't familiar with or they think water safety is the same in a river as it is in a pool. And it's very different, as you all well know. Our partner organizations are huge in making our program possible. First of all is you all, the city of Troutdale. And we've had wonderful relations with your parks department and public works department. We do a lot of our training at the park at Glen Otto. And we've always used the Annex Building there, which is a wonderful space for our training. We've had great relationships with the parks employees that are down there at the park, making sure it's a clean and safe environment for the public. We've got a long relationship with the Booster Club here. And we have a great, very close relationship with Gresham Fire Department, who has a water rescue team. We train with them regularly. And we've had several of our staff move on and go to work there after they leave our program. We also work closely with Corbett Fire Department and Waukami County Sheriff's Department. All those agencies are key in making sure our staff is trained and that when we do have an incident, we're working well together. This is a joint training we did with Gresham Station 75's water rescue team and Corbett Fire Department volunteers. So out on the Sandy River, working on how to extricate a patient using their water rescue craft, which is the red jet ski you see, and the board behind it that we could put a patient on if we had to extricate a patient that way. And finally, the picture on the left shows our team from last year with the statue in the background. That was the unveiling ceremony of the statue that was commissioned by the city and the Booster Club. And we walk by that every day as we go down to the beach. It's a great reminder of the history of this program and how important it is to have a presence there. We're really grateful for that recognition from the city, from the Booster Club. And we want to thank you all, City Council, for being such a supportive partner all these years. We hope to continue with our program. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
And if I could jump in before questions, I do want to take a moment, particularly in front of this group, to acknowledge Sean. Sean has taken this program and really run with it. He's really made it so much more robust than even we enjoyed years prior to that. So I wanted to just take this opportunity to acknowledge that with you guys. Thank you.
Yeah, any comments?
I'm a big fan. I watched you guys spraying out the window there. And I was so sorry for it. I see you in that ice cold water for summer heads. But yeah, the number of people that drove that park down compared to 99 is just huge. And the fact that they have such a good record, it's really outstanding work. I folk the river from Oxford down. And yeah, particular spot, they used to call it the shoot. It used to be a lot worse. It's calmed down slightly, but that doesn't mean it's a river. It can always come back. It's a very treacherous spot because of that sharp turn you have to make. And you can see why people panic. And there's a right way to hit it. If you don't have a lot of experience, you're not going to know that.
Yeah, indeed, Counselor White. And that's the one slide that stands out for me in this presentation. It's the number two. And those are the two big rescues, one of which you just described. If that program doesn't exist with your support, those are two deaths in the last, no doubt, no saving. So it's important. And for that reason, the number two last year. That's the reason we're there.
Big help asset. Those are definitely benefactors to the city. So I guess my only comment is, you know, if you guys need any help or need anything, all of us know.
Will do, sir.
Yeah, I think it's great. And I think that number one is prevention. I think all those numbers show the prevention and the making contact with people before something happens is key. And you're doing a great job. And I would just say the same thing. If you guys need anything from us to make sure we keep the program going, it's safe. You know, you have what you need to operate successfully, let us know.
Yeah, it's, I've enjoyed watching all the training. And we had family in town and a couple of friends from out of town. I want to say it was about two months ago, three months ago, maybe. And it just happened to be on a weekend that we were taking our family and friends touring around Troutdale and then the surrounding areas. And it just happened to be a day when they were doing some of their swift water rescue training. And so we stood out on the bridge and we were there for probably 45 minutes just watching. It was awesome. And so, you know, we appreciate it. And I know the community appreciates it. And, you know, that one example is probably one of many that could have turned out differently if it wasn't for the efforts that you all put out there every single day that you're working. And it's something that I know Troutdale's community really respects and really values as part of, you know, allowing people to go down to that river and enjoy it safely, knowing that they have competent and capable people that are working those beaches in that waterway. So I know we really appreciate it. One of my, one of my jobs as a utility worker for the city of Troutdale was hauling that lifeguard shed down that hill with the backhoe. And when my superintendent first asked, said, hey, that's what you're doing today, I thought he was joking. And then I quickly found out it was not a joke. And that's how we got it down there. So yeah, the public works department, they do a great job and assist to you and just like all the other, all the other agencies in their, in their part, right? So yeah, I really appreciate it. And thank you for taking the time to come out, hanging out with the other Randy Lowery.
Yeah, that's right.
Instead of your director?
Yep. Director. Director.
Yeah, so.
Which he wanted to send his apologies for not being here. He was called the doubts.
Yeah, that's what he, that's what he said. So it was really fun getting to meet him and getting to know him and comparing stories of his family and friends driving through East County, saying, I didn't know you were running for mayor. And then my family and friends driving through, you know, Portland or Beaverton, Twalton area, saying, how are you able to run for Twalton Valley Fire Board? That doesn't make any sense. So it was really funny dealing with that during election time. It always seemed to be on the same, the same calendar year. So if there's nothing else from council, if there's anything from citizens that wish to make a comment to the two gentlemen we have here, now would be the time. On Zoom, if anybody wants to make a comment, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. Not seeing anybody, anybody in council chambers? All right. I think that's it. We appreciate it. Thank you for all your hard work.
You bet.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, let's move on to agenda item number five, an ordinance introduction, adopting text amendments to chapters three and five of the Troutdale Development Code. Dakota Meyer? You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I will pull up a brief presentation. Let's get that pulled up really quickly. All right. Thank you so much for having me tonight. My name is Dakota Meyer. I'm the associate planner here with the city of Troutdale. I will be presenting the staff report for the proposed text amendments to the commercial and industrial zoning district and miscellaneous uses and standards chapters of the Troutdale Development Code under case file 7514. I want to start off by saying there's two primary requests with this, with these proposed amendments. Both are initiated by the city. We're proposing to update the use tables for the general commercial, light, industrial, and general industrial zones to change the marijuana facilities use from a conditional to a not permitted. This changes in response to City Council's passing of ordinance 882, approving the ban of additional marijuana facilities. Therefore, with approval of this proposed amendment, we will be bringing the Troutdale Development Code in compliance with that ordinance. The second request is to amend chapter five miscellaneous uses and standards to reserve subchapter 5.900 for future psilocybin standards. Draft regulations on psilocybin facilities are not yet drafted, so they're not part of this, this proposal. This is an introductory hearing and there'll be no voting at this time. It'll be for the next hearing. You'll see here on the zoning map, it was a little difficult to do, to try to get the whole map of the city. So bear with me. The sections in red, those are the general commercial zones. The sections in kind of a light gray are the light industrial. And then the dark gray are the general industrial. And those are the zones that will be affected by this proposal. Here's an overview of the proposed amendments, two of which are within chapter three and one and chapter five. The chapter three amendments are for 3.320, the use table for commercial zoning districts. The only change here is changing the marijuana facilities from a conditional use to a not permitted. So from a C to an N. The same goes for section 3.420 for industrial zoning districts, changing the marijuana facilities from conditional use in the light industrial and general industrial zones to a not permitted. And then adding a subchapter under chapter five as a reserved section for psilocybin standards. Here is a depiction of the proposed changes in the use tables in chapters 3.320 and 3.420. As you can see, we're changing the C to an N. And that's the only change. The rest of the, the rest of the section remains the same. And here is what the proposed chapter for chapter five will look like. You'll see the addition of 5.900 psilocybin chapter reserved. These are the approval criteria that will be used by both the planning commission and council. Proposed changes to development code does not conflict with applicable comprehensive land use plan goals or policies. The proposed change is consistent with the applicable statewide planning goals. The proposed change is consistent with the applicable provisions of Metro Code. Public need is best satisfied by this particular change. The change is, the change will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Staff propose that these criteria are met. The procedure is a type four procedure for this land use application. Planning Commission's authority is to make the formal recommendation to council. At the Planning Commission hearing on October 11th, Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the text amendment to the city council. City council is a decision-making entity. And the notices, notice of application was provided as required by code. City council action, the action City Council is asked to take is to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation, which is approval of the proposed code amendments, at two public hearings. The City Council hearings are today, October 24th, and the next hearing, which would be November 14th, 2023. Actions at the November 14th meeting or hearing are to confirm, amend, or reserve Planning Commission's recommendation, enact or defeat all or part of the ordinance, remand some or all of the proposal to Planning Commission. Thank you. Now I'll take any questions.
Quick question. So this would be basically saying we're not allowing marijuana facilities in Troutdale in those zones. Is that correct?
Correct.
I thought we like, when we did that, we were sending that to the voters to whether they decide. So is it like, if they vote, yes, we want this, we've already got this done? Is that how that process works?
Correct. So we're making these changes due to the ordinance being passed by City Council. So the code is up to date with the, with the ordinance. If the voters vote to uphold that ordinance, then the code has been updated. If they vote that they, the opposite, they don't want that ordinance, then we would be going back in and making edits to basically undo what we're doing currently.
Mr. Ray.
Yeah, just to maybe add some additional information, it's essentially a two-pronged approach to performing what the council wants, which is not to allow any more marijuana retailers in the city. One is the ordinance that we passed a couple of months ago that says you just can't have them in the city. But that is temporary until the citizens approve it or it goes away, if it's disapproved. But there's also a second way of accomplishing that, which is changing our development code so we don't allow them anywhere under a different type of legal mechanism. And this is what we're doing now, that second mechanism. So in case the other one fails, there's also this zoning change that doesn't allow them any place. So that's why there's two paths.
Yeah, so we would, the last time we voted on this, we voted to send it to the voters to let them decide.
Right, but it does ban them now, any new ones now.
Until, until that goes, it's just kind of a placeholder.
Yes.
But we didn't like vote on the, for.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
And it also does not eliminate any lawfully existing uses.
Right. So the one that gets grandfathered in technically. Right, yeah, yeah. Okay. Can I get the screen back to you?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. So just, I just wanted to clarify again, one. So by. So just, I just wanted to clarify again, one, so by, if the council were to vote, yes, for this, this is separate than the voting one.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? It's pretty straightforward for me. If there's no comments or questions from council, I'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. Let's stick to, oh, we have.
I think you need to hold a public hearing, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Dave. Forgot we're need, doing an ordinance introduction. Let's go ahead and start the public hearing regarding ordinance, uh, agenda item number five and ordinance adopting text amendments to chapter three and five of the Troutdale Development Code. Anybody on Zoom wishes to make a comment? Now's the time. Uh, go ahead and state your name and city of residence for the record. Okay. Anybody in council chambers wishes to make comment? Now's the time. Go ahead and approach the desk and name and city of residence for the record.
Well, Cox Troutdale. Speaking to the city named as Citizen Will Cox rather than Plan Commissioner Cox. We do both agree on this issue. Okay, it was good to it. Pretty sure this is under five minutes. Mayor and counselors. During the plan commission meeting, Associate Planner Meyer was asked what would happen to the Troutdale Development Code language regarding marijuana facilities? The voters rejected the ordinance eight, eight, two ban. His response was that they would be going back to conditional uses in the three development zones. Land Commission Chair Snaffinson also stated they would redo the code. Community, community development, planning commission and city council are not obligated or required to do that. Across-the-board prohibition could remain in effect or where facilities are allowed could be altered in any number of ways. This also leaves voters in the dark as to what will be allowed post ordinance eight, eight, two, if the ban is not upheld. Prior to changing all three development zones from conditional to not permitted, the major scrivener's air commission had been correct. Then recently that Oregon House Bill four zero one six put into effect a moratorium on new marijuana licenses submitted between January twenty twenty-two and March thirty-one, twenty twenty-four to address imbalances in supply and demand. In the short term, anyway, this may have made Troutdale ordinance eight, eight, two unnecessary. An effective ordinance eight, eight, two has been the city's loss of state shared tax revenues in the tens of thousands of dollars till voters have an opportunity to weigh in. Those losses would of course continue beyond the election if voters uphold the ban. It would also continue if the TDC language remains the same as approved here. The staff report under cons, it reads, quote, changing marijuana facilities from a conditional to a not permitted use, it lead to lost and potential tax income. The city should consider what the opportunity cost of its proposed amendment should be in terms of lost economic development opportunities, unquote. This appears to contradict that the code would revert back to the previous code language. If ordinance eight, eight, two's ban is not upheld by voters. My understanding is that the tax was turned off back in March when eight, eight, two was passed. With the only pre-existing marijuana retailer grandfathered in, that property owner has total control over whether there will be any retail marijuana within Troutdale. And then of course, on the length in terms of the current lease agreement. My position was that the current code language should have been left in place so the return to pre-ordinance eight, eight, two would seamlessly occur with the voters reject, rejected the ban. There'd be no harm in leaving it in place since the language in ordinance eight, eight, two disallow any application prior to the November twenty twenty-four election. I might add also that there's nothing in the ballot measure language saying what happens if the measure fails. For your, for the next two weeks, I'll send a copy of this to all you guys and, uh, you know, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next.
Good evening, Mayor Lauer, City Councilors, Tanny Staffenson, uh, Planning Commission Chair. I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen. Looking at this, um, one thing I want to comment on was more of the, from the staff report, you know, looking at the economics, I believe that we were looking at like twenty thousand dollars income from marijuana. And, um, I guess I would say, you know, something that should be considered is not economic development, but economic undevelopment. If you talk to many of your business owners, they prefer not to have one of these facilities next to them. And I, I think that's something that needs to be considered and, you know, we might be getting twenty thousand dollars or we might not be getting twenty thousand dollars. But at what cost? Are we making those decisions? And what's the end result? You know, the only, um, I know that, you know, talking to people that are located next to potential or existing, they don't really like it. I mean, unless you're putting in a Dorito shop or something, I mean, it's probably not the best spot to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanny. All right. Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Meyer, thank you very much. Do we have any other comments or questions from council after hearing the, uh, public testimony?
Ray, just one, or, uh, Mayor, just one comment if I could. More, more for Ray. Ray, wasn't the, uh, starting next year, wasn't the dispersment to cities on the marijuana dispersment of funds going to be re-dispersed differently and going to be less? And wasn't the estimated amount this year only going to be like sixteen and change from Eric? I thought that that was the number that I remember. It wasn't even as high as twenty. It, it kept dwindling down, dwindling down. And I thought the number he had given us was around sixteen. But I thought there was a new legislative move where the funds were going to, what, the funds were going to be diluted even further next year.
Yeah, don't, um, hold me to these numbers, but it was something like two or three years ago, we got like over fifty thousand dollars a year. And then the legislature started robbing from the city share of the marijuana sales and putting it into other desirable programs. What have they, they wanted to do? So yeah, now we are now down to less than twenty thousand dollars. And I think, uh, part of that was the motivation to, well, what are we losing versus what we're gaining? And since they cut it so low, there was not really a monetary issue because it keeps going down. So, Council, which, and that is correct with not knowing the exact numbers, but that's a substantial reduction.
Yeah. And I was, thought there was one more factor, like they were adding in another point, the state was adding in another resource to get paid from those funds as well to dilute it even further next year, if I remember correctly. And I don't remember exactly what that was off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't, I, I'm surprised, but they were using it as a source of funds for other things and just the LOC, the Lake Morgan Cities tried to push back, but it was a no winner the last legislative session or the one before.
Thank you. Counsel White? Oh, okay. Okay. Well, good. Thank you, Counsel Whitton. Um, any other comments or questions from council? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to the next, the next reading. All right, let's move on to agenda item number six, a discussion on the franchise agreement with waste management. If I'm reading this correctly, there was a coup against, um, uh, Travis Holton because Ryan Legura is now our public works director. According to the agenda. So congratulations on your promotion.
Didn't know I had that coming.
I was asking them, I forgot to ask you to wait until I told Travis that, because I know it's just out of the bag now.
Yeah, congratulations.
If you don't show up, someone else is ready to take.
There's always someone to fill the seat.
Someone ready. Welcome. Uh, thank you for having me, Mayor, uh, and city council members. Uh, yes, tonight is going to be a discussion of the franchise agreement, kind of a preliminary, very high level, uh, kind of overview of some of the things I'm looking at. I tried to pick out some of the major topics, uh, to just kind of get some of your feedback tonight. Uh, maybe weigh in, maybe tell me, you know, new things that you've really been thinking about that you'd like to see added, uh, things that I haven't put in. Uh, so, yeah, thank you. Next slide, please, Sarah. Thank you. So here is our current franchise agreement timeline. We started in January first, twenty sixteen. We conducted a survey last year of the public. We had seventy-six responses uh, in August of twenty twenty-two to try to get some feedback, initial feedback on waste management's performance. Uh, then we had a franchise review that I shared, maybe some of those, uh, performance reviews with you guys in the January tenth meeting. And now here, uh, it's December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three is when the expiration of this current franchise agreement, uh, occurs. Uh, next slide, please, Sarah. Thank you. Uh, tonight we'll be going over some, some format changes, some customer service, some transfer station service and support for and receptacles, as you may have noticed already in the room. Uh, so yeah, for, format changes. Currently our, our franchise agreements just broken out into like thirty-some sections with no real general, you know, uh, section headings that would break down into sub settings, subsections. So I kind of proposed, maybe we could maybe break it out to maybe five sections overall and then have subsections within those. I know this is very minor, but I just want to let you know that this was what I was thinking of trying, trying to change it up to maybe make it a little more easy, a little more accessible to the casual reader who may pick it up and say, hey, where do I find such and such? Oh, it's under here. Okay. Maybe that'll help. I'm not sure, but anyways, just an FYI on this, if you have any strong feelings. Uh, next slide, please, Sarah. Uh, next we move over to collection, support and management. Now, within that kind of heading, there's several subsections, but two of them I pulled out for you tonight was billing. One would be to kind of expand language for a credit risk guideline. So that would be customers who maybe aren't paying their bills. It might add some more, uh, more language to what I think we currently have. Uh, that would help kind of guideline to what that customer might expect i- if they aren't going to be paying their bills and how waste management might move forward and with handling them. So that kind of mirrors, I've noticed, uh, specifically I took this guideline language from the City of Beaverton. They recently adopted it, uh, in their franchise kind of, um, standards, I should say, administrative rules. Uh, I also, uh, thought I would simplify vacation credit rules. Right now, we kind of refer to some formula that waste management may apply for this, but it's not really spelled out in the franchise agreement. I also, again, borrowed what, um, the City of Beaverton has done because it kind of spells it out within the franchise agreement and kind of, it's a little more cut and dry, I feel like, uh, on, on what, you know, you could be, uh, receiving credit if you're away from your home for a period of two weeks or more. Um, next I looked at some communication. Now, this would be in the twenty twenty-two survey of the seventy-six responses, I had, uh, for the most part, positive uh, feedback on telephone customer service. However, that was in August of twenty twenty-two. Now, since that time period, there has been a lot more rollout of automated, uh, technologies, specifically, you've probably heard of chat GPT. So this is being implemented in different ways. You may have come across and other, uh, you know, utilities or other ways in life, forms of life. Uh, and, and so waste management as a company has been rolling this out, I think nationwide. Dave, who is here from waste management, Dave Huber, he can speak to me and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this is a company nationwide. And so in that process of trying to use technology, trying to maybe make it easier, uh, for the customer. I have heard from public, uh, and senior residents alike, uh, in the City of Troutdale that actually this is kind of making it harder for some folks that it's, it's maybe they don't have either the technology available. Cause as I said, a lot of it becomes technology dependent. You gotta have a, a smartphone to, you know, interact. You have to have, uh, maybe some online presence in order to get some, you know, customer feedback, uh, through communication. And, you know, not everyone has that. So I have heard some specific examples, uh, as of late, uh, that it's hard. It's hard to get ahold of a live person. How do I get ahold of a live person? How long do I need to wait until I hear that? So I'm hoping to add some, um, some stipulations in there that would hopefully, you know, and I know I've been talking with Dave about this. We're hoping to try. I, we are a small town amongst a, a national, uh, company. So I know that we can't demand and, and expect to see immediate change, but just to at least, um, voice that, hey, if these, you know, kind of stipulations aren't met, maybe we could have some sort of, you know, s- something, something better than what is maybe being rolled out currently. So I know that's very vague right now, what I'm referring to, but I'm just wanting to bring it up that, you know, communication is obviously a very important aspect for customers here in the City of Troutdale in order to get better service. And so I feel like I just want to draw this attention that, hey, I, I'm, I'm wanting to, hopefully we can put some pressure on waste management that, you know, our customers really need to have something that's accessible to all, not just those with that technology and know how to use it. A next slide, please, Sarah. So this is one of the new kind of services I'm looking at, uh, offering in our franchise agreement. Uh, this would be transfer station services. As I mentioned, I think previously we have this great transfer station right in our backyard and we haven't really been able to use it for the general public. With the money that we've received from Metro and the state funds HB fifty-two oh two, we've been able to host two separate bulky waste drop-off events in the past year. One last November in twenty twenty-two and just one this past Saturday. Uh, and, and the first one last year, we got about ninety-three customers that came through. And this past Saturday, we really, uh, expanded that. We had two hundred and eleven, I believe, people drive through, two hundred and seven, eleven separate vehicles come through. And, and most of them that I spoke with were all Troutdale residents and they were very happy to have this available. And so this was great because we had grant money to fund these events. So they were free of cost to the general public. However, looking forward, I would at least like to offer maybe on a quarterly basis, uh, on a Saturday, open it up nine to twelve, like we just did this past Saturday and and have it available for those public to come through. Now, there would be potentially a flat rate cost of service. I don't know what that would be right now. We have, we've been just beginning to have these discussions with waste management. But it could be items such as household bulky waste, couches, mattresses, et cetera. It could be potentially non-curb-side recyclables that aren't really in your curb-side recyclable right now. I know other cities in the jurisdiction and the metro region have what's called maybe recycle plus, uh, that waste management has participated in. But we could maybe offer something similar, but at a drop-off point, uh, once a, once a quarter. Uh, could be some sharps containers for those who with diabetes that need a place to dispose of those, that they could have that access maybe once a quarter. And then there could potentially be tires as well. I know that's an item that I've just recently heard that are very difficult to, uh, get rid of and, and even waste management. And all our companies are having a hard time finding that. But maybe we can at least offer, uh, a better place than the side of the road for folks to drop it off at. So, uh, this, this is a potential service that we, I could add language, uh, easily to the franchise agreement for the public. Uh, next slide, please. Okay. And so support for, so what could some waste management maybe offer that they're currently not offering us? One is emergency response. Uh, I don't remember, I've looked at this franchise agreement and like I said, there's, there's a lot in it. It's a dense, uh, dense lot, amount of material. But I don't remember, uh, coming across that we've had a request for emergency response to assist the city in the event of a natural disaster or emergency declaration that we could have waste management offer their support to us in helping to clear debris and whatnot during, uh, an event like that. Uh, this would assist the city in developing any reports or application also necessary to seek federal assistance, because that's typically how it'll work, that we'll need to have some federal assistance monies. And so that would help us in documenting how much was collected, costs and all that going forward to, to, to submit to the federal, for federal aid. Uh, also, uh, support for maybe community events. Uh, I don't think there's anything that specifically calls out maybe our first Friday events during the summer that we may need some, uh, potential, uh, support for in terms of garbage recyclable with things like that or any other city-led events. So. So that's a potential add ons that I don't remember seeing in our current franchise agreement. Next slide please. And finally, the show and tell part in receptacles. We, we are going to probably need to match the metro regional standards for multifamily containers. So I could put language in there. Requiring color coding and, and I think labeling on cards are containers for multifamily units. So that language in the franchise agreement would allow waste management to then make these, you know, provisions to make purchases down the line. That to roll out those costs over time. Similarly to what I'm proposing for maybe requiring a different kind of locking mechanism. That what we currently have with the bungee cords at the curb. So maybe just putting in more general language of requiring single family carts with automatic locking mechanism. Which like you probably may know, bungee cord system is not automatically locking. And so we could roll out these kind of container, containers only for recyclables, the sixty four gallon. Or we could roll it out for garbage for like the thirty two or thirty five gallon carts and above, or we could roll it out for everything. But as I will say, for some of these items, there is going to be costs involved. So that cost will be amortized into your rates, your curb side rates for collection. So that's just, but I could put some language in there requiring something different. I'll quickly demonstrate what we have here. So waste management has found two different companies. This, this cart was very similar to what we currently have with the bungee cords. Maybe a little more substantial for right now. But as you can see, maybe not that big of a profit either. What we're thinking is probably a better solution are the automatic locking ones. There's two different sizes here. The thirty five gallon cart comes with this style. So it's, as you can see on the top lid, it shows you a locking icon unlocked. So if it's like this, you know, as a resident, you can open it up, put your junk garbage in, and when you lock it, it's supposed to not open up. Now, when the car, when the truck comes by with their automatic cart with their arms, they'll click it up. And when they dump it, it has the locking mechanism to automatically unlock. So no driver needs to get out manually lock, unlock it, lock it like they kind of do at the bungee cord. The hope is this is more efficient for drivers for drive time. Same thing with the larger size. So this is a sixty four gallon. A little bit different in that when you open it, you squeeze these and then you release this locking mechanism right here. I have the picture right there that shows the inside of the cart. It's kind of magic. We haven't figured it out. I'm trapped on that too. But anyways, so if it, as it stays locked, as you can see, so it's supposed to, you know. Wind blown over how these, as waste management has said, the company has said, they actually get a lot of these orders in Montana. Territories with a lot of bears because bears will come by all these things and they can't unlock them. So that's where they've kind of seen uses of them. But since we have our own bear of a wind, we will use it on that. So like I said, that's just kind of giving you an idea that we could put language in there requiring a different kind of locking mechanism, not necessarily a bungee cord anymore. Next slides please, Sarah. And that was all I had for you for this kind of high end overview and whirlwind tour of potential add ons to our franchise agreement. If you have any questions, feedback, I'd really appreciate it. Of course, Ed, you'll be needing to review the franchise agreement with any language along with waste management's legal team. So this process, I know I'm on the docket for November fourteenth. I know it takes time to do these kind of reviews, so maybe I'll have time to get that reviews done. But anyways, I know our deadline is coming up December thirty first. However, I'm also hopeful if things don't go as smoothly as possible. We can have an extension, administrative extension of the franchise agreement. If that's the legal path we need to take. So yeah, any, any questions, feedback for me, please?
Any comments or questions from council? Counselor Ripma.
I did have a problem reaching a person. Waste management and so, and, and they, the automated system was fine if you just needed another pickup or something like that. It had, it had a few choices, but what the truck had done when they picked up my yard debris is they took the whole yard debris container with them. And there was nothing wrong with it, but it just wasn't there when they were gone. And they were perfectly. Willing to replace it and replaced it the very next week. It was handled, but getting through to a person was ridiculous. It just, there were all these options. It was automated and it was voice activated. I think maybe you could push a button or something, but it didn't have that. It didn't have, I need another cart. As one of the options. I can't remember how I got through. I just kept banging away at it, I guess. Probably did, but anyway, you might ask them to. Have an option of, most places have, you know, push zero if you want to talk to somebody or something. That's the only complaint I have really. Otherwise, I think they, the service has been great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Anybody else wishes to make comment?
I'd say the only thing is just, we have to have one of those locking mechanisms. Like you can't be a bungee cord. And they're great. Like I got, I asked them for, this is my thing I said in January too, my first like meeting is like. And I asked them for another, you know, like, hey, my, my bungee cord boom, next week, like Dave, it's, it's out there, which was great, but the bungee cord is gone again. And it hasn't been windy, but it will be here in the next couple of weeks, probably. Whatever we do, it has to be a locking. That's all, that's.
So that looks all right for you.
Dude, those things are awesome. I'm like, yeah, sign me up now, let's do that.
Okay. Thank you for the feedback.
Yeah, I'll say I think you're on the right track. I think. I've had no complaints, no problems. I think we've, we've been fortunate in our neighborhood to get some really good and caring drivers through our area. I've been trying to get it on video, but every season I, there's this recyclable, or we call it the garbage tornado of all the papers and bills and. Bags and stuff just swirling around the neighborhood from cans getting tipped over. So something like this, I think is overdue, especially here in Troutdale, so.
Yeah. And I was, we were thinking, you know, maybe recyclables might be the first one to, you know, take on that cost. Only because those materials are always loose in the bin versus garbage. Hopefully people are at least bagging their garbage. Now, I know that doesn't always happen and sometimes they overfill it and then it falls over and whatnot. But maybe recyclables, the sixty four gallon right there might be the first one we sign up for potentially.
Yeah, I think finding ways to where we can get more bulky waste events quarterly, I think would be a good idea. It always seems that we're always, me personally, my, me and my wife are always out of town and we always miss it. And so having another couple of opportunities throughout the year, I think would be beneficial for the area. Like you said. It, it's funny though, that we had one last Saturday, is that what you said? And then this week, there's mattresses and tires and all kinds of stuff all over. Not all over, but more so this week than there was the previous week. So.
In the neighborhood?
Neighborhood, outside Halsey area, down by Edgefield, there's a couple of mattresses down there. I think they got picked up though. But it's always after the fact. If it gets shut down or people miss it, then like you said, goes to the side of the road. So more opportunities, I think would be better. And if that means a, so when you said, and I know we're not there yet, but when you said there could be an added cost. Is that per, are you, are we looking at an added cost per resident, per household or an added cost for the city for hosting that event?
Yeah. So let's just take, let's say, for example, the carts. If we did a rollout of the sixty four gallon carts, I think waste management, they had given me an estimate. It's a little over a dollar potentially per person, per month for the thirty five gallon cart. For the sixty four gallon cart, or I think if it's one cart, if it's two carts, then it'd be about two something, let's say, per month, per residential customer. So necessarily, it wouldn't necessarily obviously go to commercial rates because that would all strictly be residential still for single family homes. But for something like the bulky waste events, we were just talking about this as well. We're going to have a better idea of, there might be the flat rate that a customer would pay as they pull up, right? For the disposal of their items. However, there is the cost of service for the operation of that, you know, transfer station for that time period. And how much the labor and blah, 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 how much that might cost. Do the, does the city potentially want to take on that cost? Or do we want to pass that cost over into the collection side of rates? You know, there's, there's maybe some different ways we want to handle that. And, and I will say, if we did decide, if we do in the franchise agreement, put in, you know, let's update our carts. Well, we're not going to immediately have new carts coming out in January or something. This would be reviewed when we do a next rate review, let's say. And then we would take those, that might be in next July. Because I have a good feeling there's the next metro crease of fees and taxes going on. So that would be, you know, looked at in addition to our normal rate review time period. So, you know, in terms of timeline of new carts, it might not be until next summer, late next summer or something like that, just to give you a general idea. I'll, I'll also speak, thank you, Mayor, that, you know, the single family home curb side, once a year event, I don't anticipate. I wasn't going to remove that. I think I've gotten enough feedback from folks that really appreciate having that. And so those costs are always rolled into the, the rates. Okay. When I receive a detailed cost report in March from waste management. That cost of putting on that event is rolled into the rate. So people are already paying for that single family home curb site. Collection and bulky waste in May. So anyway, so we could potentially add, you know, okay, the operation and maintenance or operation of the transfer station. During these quarterly bulky waste events, maybe we roll that in and then maybe customers just pay a flat fee for the disposal cost of their items. I don't know. But just giving examples.
Yeah.
And there's other things, you know, I, I, for the most part, I did transfer over a lot of the existing franchise agreement language. I didn't just do a wholesale change. I tried to just pick and choose items that I thought could use some updating and whatnot. So it's maybe some wordsmithing, something simple as that. But yeah, so there's, there's, yeah, most of it is intact, I would say, but.
Any other comments or questions from council?
I just wanted to echo what Mayor Lauer said, like my brother in law went this past weekend, said it was awesome.
Oh, he did? Good.
He's like rolled in, emptied the truck, rolled out, it was perfect, like, and it was close. Usually if we have to go dump anything, you have to go down to like a hundred and twenty second or a hundred and second, whatever it is. And twenty second, you have to drive all the way down there, you know, and I don't mind paying, but it's nice to have a place that's close. So quarterly dump would be great. And I don't, I, as a person going through it, I would expect I'd have to pay, you know, whatever it is, twenty bucks or thirty bucks to dump your stuff and.
Could be more. We, we were told.
Yeah, I mean, whatever it is, I want to get rid of my, my stuff. And it's nice to have a close place you could go to since it is there, so.
Well, Dave and I am sure greeted your brother in law because we were there for the cars coming through, so.
Does anybody have any questions for, Dave, what's your last name? Huber, Dave Huber. Oh, you've been here before. Anybody have any questions for Dave with waste management?
I just have a clarifying question. Anyone can answer it. So that new style cam, the driver would not have to exit the vehicle and undo.
That's my understanding. When they came to demo, demo it a couple of months ago now, yeah, they just had the sidearm come out. Now, they did have the driver roll it up to it at the time because we weren't at a, we were at the public works building. So they, they did roll it over. But my understanding is, and maybe Dave can correct me, but it's going to be automatic for that driver.
What do you come, Dave? Yeah, that's one of the, yeah, that's one of the things. I mean, in my neighborhood, and I don't know if this is all over Troutdale, but our neighbors. They attach the bungee and then they lay the carts down. So they're already on the ground. So there's not only the bungee, but then the driver also has to pick up and maneuver the cans, which I'm guessing they do that. And by extension, follow the leader, right? I do the same thing. And it just seems like it doesn't wander off down the road that way, right? This maybe eliminates that, but also like Counselor White said, it might just increase that efficiency rating.
That, that's our thought. I know we, we spoke to Ryan about that when we brought him out. You know, yeah, so this is kind of a plus plus, you know, because yeah, it, it's not only going to keep Troutdale cleaner. And, and keep that stuff in the, in the cart. But yeah, this, this will make, you know, things more efficient for the drivers and not having to get out of the truck. And, and, and that's really, you know, that's good for everybody to, to keep those costs down. So, yeah.
Yeah. And I think figuring out ways to, you know, bring waste management into, like you said, into the, not necessarily into the fold. But opportunities for city events and whatever that language could look like if there's a partnership there. And then also I think grant language, grant rider. I mean, that's. Attacking that from two different angles. And I think we all would benefit from having better access or more. Opportunities to actually get federal aid for stuff like this, you know, and.
Well, that would, that would be strictly for more emergency response, like, yeah.
Either way, I mean, either way, more is better than just us chipping away at that. And granted, yeah, we don't have emergency situations constantly, but you never know.
Yeah.
So.
Another question. Well, this probably is a very fair question, but I'm wondering. How, how much longer do you think it will be before residents will be having to. Food scraps in a separate container? Is that something you guys see on the horizon?
So I don't know if you remember Chris Bell, our, our consultant that we've used to do rate reviews. He has, he has spoken to me that, that is, that's kind of, you know, it's, it's expensive to do. Because of the weight, the added weight in the carts and, you know, a lot of water, a lot of, you know, whatnot in your yard debris container. So he's just been cautioning that that could see another rate increase due to that collection of, you know, food scraps. So.
And, you know, to your point, that more cities are, are moving to that, you know, just here this month, October. Unappropriated Washington County, now that's included in the yard debris is, is food waste as well. So yeah, but Ryan, like Ryan said too, it, yeah, there, there could be added costs because it, it might entail going to a different facility. More weight obviously as well too. So, but yeah, that's something we can certainly look at.
So I did, I did add Counselor White, some language as well about pilot programs. So that might fall be something that if we're, the city is very interested in, we could say, hey, do we want to do a pilot program of food, food scrap collection? You know, and, and see, there might be costs associated with that. So I don't want to say that a pilot program is free because there's obviously cost of service involved. But that, that language in there in the franchise agreement would allow us to maybe look at something like that if there's a lot of interest by the council.
That was actually advocating for.
Gotcha. Okay.
Any other comments or questions from council? Do we have any comments or questions from public? Let's go ahead and open up public comment on agenda item number six. If anyone has comments or questions for city staff or waste management representative, now is the time. On Zoom, go ahead and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right. Anybody in council chambers tonight wishes to make comment? Now would be the time. I'm going to have, yeah, if you wouldn't mind just sitting back for just a second.
Good evening, Mayor Lauer, councilors, Kenny Staffen, St. Troutdale resident. First thing I want to say is I think waste management does a very good job. But I do wonder about an eight year agreement. And just because the city, we just found ourselves time after time going into these long term agreements and partway through them. We're like, well, was this such a good idea or not? And I don't know the situation, but you have, you know, aggressive sanitation, twelve mile disposal, waste connections, all doing business within what? Two miles of Troutdale. And is this something where any of those companies are interested in expanding their territory? I don't know. I just think that typically competition makes people better. And when you've got an agreement, you really don't have as much competition as you would have if you had a shorter agreement. And, but I do think that, you know. I've always thought it's strange that we guarantee a rate return to a private business. That we really don't have much control of their operating model. Just a personal opinion. But you look at it, I don't know, what do we have? About five thousand garbage customers ish?
That's about forty, forty five.
So if it's forty five hundred, that's about, and each one had garbage and recycle. So if it's forty-five hundred, that's about, then each one had garbage and recycling, right? Over the course of the contract at a buck a month. That's like, what, uh, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars? What?
I don't know.
We'd be paying for the cart. And I'm just wondering, you know, um, and I know things go up, but since two thousand and six, our rates have gone up sixty-three percent. And um, I don't know, it's just sometimes when you have a long contract like that, there's something that you get when you do a long contract. Cause companies getting a, they're getting a great revenue stream. And just wondering, I don't know what, maybe you guys are getting something and it's all good, it was just. Thought I'd just make a comment. Thank you for allowing comments, Sydney, appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Anybody else wishes to make comment? Now is the time. Okay. Hope a comment is closed. Mr. Ray Young?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Staffen makes a lot of good comments, um, and it's something that definitely has to be looked at. Um, this is kind of what we did, staff did for council a number of months ago, which we did, that's why we did the survey. Uh, we brought in results from other local cities and what they paid with different providers. Um, to uh, give the council a feel for price and quality of service. Um, and give you, we gave the option, do you want to go out and bid for other things? And the problem with going out and bidding is you, it costs a lot of money, takes a lot of time. You sometimes you hire a consultant to compare delivery services and stuff. And so considering that the survey says, plus the rates were very competitive. And the service was mostly in the good range, um, council gave staff the direction that, let's just go with this one. Uh, the eight-year period of time, that's what we have now. And I don't know if Ryan has any comments or they want to respond to that comment. It's a good issue to think about, you know.
Yeah, so eight years is, uh, from what my understanding is, is kind of on the short side of uh, contract agreements. I know one city in particular has a ten-year agreement with their hauler, and I want to say some have longer. Um, I couldn't say how much longer, I don't remember, but um, yeah, uh, so yes, as Ray did speak, we did bring this before council in January tenth. To say, do you want me to go open bid process to, you know, haulers, but as Ray did mention. And I was referred to by other folks who have done this. It is an expensive process to pay a consultant, you know, X amount. Uh, my estimate was forty to eighty at least, uh, you know, worth of fees for a consultant to help.
Or you need a thousand.
Thousand dollars, not dollars, yeah, not just dollars, um, thousands.
Eighty bucks, let's go.
Yeah, yeah, so there, there were those considerations, I think, and, and this was my direction given me, so.
Yeah.
I will speak to that. And I will say that, you know, the longer the agreement is, obviously Waste Management then can amortize those costs over a longer period of time. Which hopefully draw, pushes down the cost uh, from a higher increase month to month. The shorter time period, the higher the cost is benefits. So that is one benefit of extending these franchise agreements for these items, such as maybe new equipment.
Okay. Counselor White?
What, what is the current length of the contract?
Uh, eight years, yeah. So we're, we're reaching the end of the eight-year contract, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, and as Brian indicated, a lot of the contracts that we have uh, here in Oregon are, I mean, they range from. I think the longest one I've seen is twelve years, which is the city of Portland, uh, with a midterm review halfway through. Um, but a lot of the contracts that we have are, are ten years. I think the shortest one I, I have, we have is a seven-year contract. So, um, and, and like Ryan said, it's, a lot of that is to amortize those costs over time. Uh, you know, the, to, to purchase trucks and, 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 you know, containers or all that stuff. Uh, you're able to amortize that over a longer length period of time, which, you know, kind of keeps those costs down on a monthly basis for the customers, so.
Okay, but I will agree. It is always good to say, what are we getting for our money, right? What are the services they're offering? Can it be better? So um, that's, this is the opportunity to hopefully say, hey, we need someone here.
Yeah, great. Anybody else on council? All right. Thank you both very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, councilor.
Agenda item number seven, staff communications, Mr. Ray Young, the floor is yours.
Number one, we had a wonderful party on Sunday afternoon at Columbia Park. It was the grand opening of the dog park. Uh, we had at least twenty-five um, dogs entered in the costume contest and uh. Travis Kelsey and um. Taylor Swift won, they were there.
Really quick.
Yeah, Chris, yeah. One of the dogs had the Kansas City Jersey, Kansas City Chiefs jersey on, the other one had a long blonde wig on it and. For creativity, that one won the contest. So it was a great turnout. Everybody loved the park, uh, loved the amenities. Uh, praised ours over Gresham's o- o- off-leash dog park. And um, for those of you who are here, and I have ones that are not here. Everybody that was, wanted ones, got these very nice Troutdale logoed doggy bags. So whether you have a dog or not, Counselor White, you can pick up somebody else's crap. So there you go. So, rest of councilors, I have one for you also. So. Number two, uh, trick or treat. Next Tuesday night, downtown Troutdale is gonna be opening the business doors and city hall to give away candy to the cute little ones from four to five-thirty on Tuesday. Directly following that, so you can continue the excitement. The Outlet Mall from five to seven will be having uh, trick or treating. So next Tuesday evening, we have a lot of trick or treating going on downtown at the Outlet Mall. Uh, number three, uh, the city is closed and we're honoring Veterans Day on Friday, November tenth. This Veterans Day is November eleventh. And um, finally, between now and the next council meeting, we have a planning commission meeting on November eighth. But I understand there's nothing too contentious going on that night, uh, Mr. Chair, I assume? Yeah, I said, don't think so. Always, of course, listen to it, watch it if you want to, but I can't speak to anything particular that may interest you that night. So, thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
All right. Council Communications, Counselor One. Nothing? Counselor White?
Um, I was at the lead Oregon cities in Eugene last weekend and uh, I really didn't see Mayor than Ray, and I recognized. It's kind of a changing of the guard, a lot of the old councilors and mayors are no longer around. But a few things I noticed, gas is three eighty-five a gallon in Eugene for some reason. It's gotta get cheaper on that. The, one thing that kind of concerned me is we have a new lead president voted in and he's the Hermiston mayor. I left a little note on my desk with his name, but um, his legislative priorities are gonna be to have property tax reform and um. And a permanent mechanism for funding homeless, so. That didn't really make my day during that, but um, other than that, it was pretty much to go book on first. I went to the tour of the, has everybody heard of the Oregon Country Fair? I went to.
Oh, yeah.
Um, it's all the people that put that together in the facility and the thing that surprised me the most is it's all been in a flood, in a flood plain area. It was Eugene's still a college town, but.
Uh, Council President Rittma?
I will pass.
All right, Counselor Caswell?
Nothing for me.
Counselor Wittern?
Kind of piggybacking off of the uh, high turnout rate on the bulk waste. I would just say that I think we're getting a good ROI on our social media person. And uh, our social media presence as a city has really been paying off and uh, we seem a lot more active and. Overall, I'd say that's a, uh, optically is a good investment and, and we seem to be doing well, Ray, so. Uh, just two cents there. And other than that, nothing else. Thank you.
I got, um, we had our um, Public Safety Working Group meeting last night. We had our third meeting. We're just about ready to um, bring some items to council for consideration with regards to our fire and police contracts that are coming up. Uh, we have some questions that we're gonna want answers to. Um, and it's a good group and we're chewing a lot of, really chewing up a lot of great information from. A lot of um, uh, persons from around the region with years of expert knowledge, so. Um, that should be coming here soon. Uh, other than that, drive safe and drive slow for Halloween. There's gonna be a lot of kids out in the street and it's getting dark. So enjoy the rest of your week. That's all I got.
I move re-adjourn.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? All right, everybody, we are done. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Yeah, I just checked this case. I haven't checked in a while. When I, we hired Kevin, we had like three thousand, thirty-two hundred followers on Facebook.